And forty-seven V fifteen.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you, motion carries. We have no student rep today, which seems odd, but.
Miss her.
Yep. They have one and a half days left.
That's right.
The countdown has begun.
Countdown has definitely begun.
Okay, that's good. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk about anything on the agenda?
I guess that would be me.
Yep, well, you're on the agenda.
Yeah, you're on the agenda. We'll go right. Okay, Michelle, you can come on up. Marion, do you want to come up?
You can come.
For moral support. Okay. Why don't you tell us a little bit about what brings you here?
Okay, um, well, can I just read off my cards?
Sure.
It'd make my life so much easier.
Whenever you like.
Okay, well, you know, I'm Michelle Manning and I am representing the class of two thousand fourteen Senior Celebration Executive Board, along with Marion Correnti. I was the treasurer and she was the president. I'm here because we would like to gift six hundred fifty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents to the Athletic Department of Georgetown Middle High School so that Mr. DeFranco can purchase a player's bench for the new athletic turf field. Last year, the Senior Celebration Committee raised funds to help pay towards the senior class rafting trip and had an extra of eight hundred eleven dollars left over. The executive board was undecided what to do with the extra funds, so we decided to think about it over the summer. Then on October thirty-first, GMHS lost a young classmate, Cam McCoy, that devastated the school. Cam was an avid football player and was liked by everyone. With that, the board decided something should be purchased for the new field and dedicated in Cam's memory. We thought a player's bench that all high school sports that use the new athletic field would be a perfect fit and also because Cam's older brother Tommy graduated with a class of two thousand fourteen and was also a football player. I have posted this information on our class two thousand fourteen Facebook page and have talked to many parents with all positive feedback. But we would also like to cover all our bases and have put out there on our Facebook page and reiterating tonight that if anyone wants a refund of eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents to contact me at MichelleManningVerizon.net or MarionCorrenti at MacDesign@Verizon.net. And how we came about this is taking the eight hundred eleven dollars divided by the seventy students that went on the trip, which would come to eleven dollars and fifty-eight cents. So if all goes well, we would have a dedication on the second home football game on October second in memory of Cam. So I want to thank you for your time and hopefully you will consider accepting our gift. Is there any questions?
Thank you for reading that, I know it's hard.
It is, I'm not very good at speaking in front of people.
You did a great job, you did a great job. But I know it's extra hard because it is such a difficult thing that we're dealing with. So I want to just say to you two that I think it's great that you went ahead and did all the due diligence and finding out exactly what we could do to honor Cam. And I think it was great that, because it was Tommy's class, that you guys were able to do that. So that's very nice. And I'm sure Mr. DeFranco is thrilled.
We, him and I have been in a lot of talks about this, so yeah. And he's hoping that maybe down the line another class can do something for the other, get another bench on the other side. So we have matching because those people are gonna have to sit on the ground.
Right.
So this bench, it's gonna be a removable bench, so every.
Yes, I have a picture. Unfortunately, it's what I've written on if you want to pass around. So you can see, it's removable and what we could do if we decide to keep it out, if the school decides to keep it out, over the course of the football soccer season, is probably attach it with chains, you know, chains and locks, because we don't want anyone walking up, because you can't put it in the ground.
Right.
No, and we didn't want to do that. And also, we will be purchasing a plaque to go on there, a small brass plaque to be attached to for Cam. And I don't know if you guys need any of this, because I have the coat that Mr. DeFranco got and the freight charge, so that comes up with a total of the six hundred and fifty.
You will donate the money and then we will purchase it.
Exactly.
Yep.
Yeah, that's very nice.
It's a great idea, because all the kids will benefit from it.
Exactly, and if you look at the field, I was driving by there one day and the equipment's hanging on the fence and if they get hurt, they're sitting on the ground right now.
I know.
You know, so.
This would be perfect.
I thought it would be.
So what, the kids are sitting on the ground?
Yeah, there's nothing for them to sit on.
Really? There's not a bench right now.
No, it's gonna look beautiful. No, I think it's a great, I think it's a great thing.
Nice bench.
And the Coy family, I'm sure, is.
I have talked to Kelly about it last week and she's all on board and she was actually the one in the deciding factor. Because at a football game before everything happened, her and I were talking about it and she goes, we should do something for the athletic field. So we just, you know.
Perfect.
Yeah, yeah, so everyone's on board.
That's very nice. It's wonderful.
So is the amount six fifty-eight sixty-nine?
Yes. Yeah, six fifty-eight sixty-nine, yep. And I still don't know what the cost of the plaque will be, that will come down. I didn't think I would have to get into that, which is something we're gonna put on. And then we also said if there was any remaining funds, because usually it's a five hundred dollar carryover from class to class that we're just gonna say to the next class, whoever needs, you know, keep it going. Because this is separate from the class dues that the kids have to give too, this is.
This is parent donation.
Parent donation, yes, and fundraising.
Huge undertaking. Every time the parents come here at the beginning of the year, I'm like, oh. It's a huge, it's a big deal.
It's worth it, though.
It is worth it.
It's really fun.
Yeah, and it's a great trip for the kids.
Right.
So.
Are you doing it again? I know she's done.
No, actually, I'm done, my stepson is.
Your stepson, right.
Yes, yeah, so he's gonna be going next week.
Yeah, so that's good.
Well, hope for deep as wellie and.
Yes.
Oh, right, oh, yeah.
He's a big team.
Yes.
It takes a lot, it takes a team.
Yeah, it does take a team, takes a village, takes a village.
Takes a village.
Yep.
Okay, so we're just gonna approve this, gifting it to the Athletic Department.
You're just gonna accept their donation, that's right.
Okay.
So the chair will entertain a motion to accept a monetary donation in the amount of six fifty-eight sixty-nine from the Senior Celebration Class of twenty fourteen to the Athletic Department of Georgetown High School.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
We graciously accept that, that's a very generous.
You're welcome, wonderful of you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it. I think Michelle, she did all the really, really hard work. She did a lot.
I will give Mr. DeFranco the check tomorrow, I believe.
Yep, that's fine, great.
Bring it down to him. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it.
Have a good summer.
Oh, you too.
Okay.
Very nice.
That's it. Okay, so we understand Chief Hudmore.
Yes.
Could not make tonight's meeting, but you are going to give us a little overview on the information in the packet.
Sure. Now, do you want me to do that first, or since Paula's here, would you rather have Julie do her thing and then I'll?
Yeah, sure.
Maybe we could do that, because, not that Paula wouldn't love to hear everything, but when she's here, maybe we can expedite her time.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Yes, excited to be here tonight.
Are you really?
I am.
So this is, yeah, Julie wants to talk about this. So it's a continuation sort of of what we talked about last time and this is actually the materials that they're bringing forward to use for the program we're talking about, so.
Before we begin, and I just told Paula, I just wanted to give a shout out to Heidi Beegan for our Camp Invention Program that's running this summer. She is our camp director and I told her I would be speaking tonight and I wanted to just remind parents that we still have spots available for Camp Invention and you can find the login and the sign-up forms and the links and videos, et cetera, on the Pearly website, the Pembroke website, the district website, and on my website, so.
So this is one of our.
And on Facebook.
And on Facebook.
So this is one of our STEM, our STEM programs and it's, from what we understand, it's an awesome program, but there is a limit, you have, there's a minimum. And so we want to run this desperately and we have a lot of interested people.
Is there a maximum as well?
Uh, no, actually, not, not at this point.
You hire more teachers, if you, there's a ratio. But, you know, we do need some, additionally, maybe six, I think you said, six or seven. So it is important we get six or seven more children so we can actually run it.
We'd like to leave it open just for the Georgetown Public School students. We have the option of opening it up citywide into other cities as well, but we really wanted to keep this for Georgetown students.
And what's the age?
And educators.
They're children, yeah.
Right.
Even if they don't live in Georgetown.
Incoming first grade to incoming sixth grade students.
And I know Julie put out something to all district, to the staff today, so that should, you know, that should communicate that, you know, if you're not in Georgetown, but you want to send your child. But it, you know, the itinerary is very exciting, I think it's gonna be amazing. So we really want to, you know, see this get off the ground and maybe it would be something we would do every summer if it was something that people were interested in.
And if people are interested, they could email me or Heidi Beegan and we'd be happy to give them more information if they have questions.
Great.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So tonight, we're here to talk about mathematics, grade six through eight and we're going to bring forward an adoption for a new mathematics program at our middle school, our grade six through eight, which will include the middle school and our sixth grade students that will next year be at Pembroke. So when we did our research, we've been looking at the math standards, the new Massachusetts standards for the last two years. Did you say, Paula?
Yeah.
And we have been working through the vertical team, but also at grade levels to determine where we are with our own curriculum, but also what the new standards are calling for. And so, just to recap, in two thousand eleven, Massachusetts adopted updated standards in English and math, in mathematics, excuse me. And over the course of the past two years, we've been working to align what curriculum we have, but what, you know, what exists in our current itinerary, but also what the new standards are calling for. We did some digging and found out that our last middle school math textbook purchase was in nineteen ninety-nine.
Wow.
Which is quite a long time ago. And that was even before the second iteration of math standards, so now we're on our third.
Okay.
So it's time.
Well, basic math skills don't change.
Math skills don't change.
Emphasis on problem solving and critical thinking and all of those things.
Standards at the grade levels in this case have shifted in terms of what's being called for. It's always nice to keep.
The common core has definitely increased the rigor, would you not say, Paula?
Absolutely.
A lot of the things that we would have done in eighth grade in the past have now, you know, moved down.
Oh, it's gone down, it's low as third and second and third grade.
Yeah, so that's definitely a factor in the need for something updated.
Right. And so, because of those shifts, that's why we started our journey into looking at, looking at math and figuring out exactly where we were and what we thought we would, we would need and would best suit our needs. And so just to summarize some of what's been going on with the Department of Ed, over the course of the Race to the Top, the last three years with Race to the Top, which Georgetown is not a part of, although it's changed a lot of the landscape in Massachusetts in terms of what districts are being asked to do. They have a number of different proficiencies that they're looking at, different districts to perform well in. And one is to improve literacy in grades pre-K to three. And then the second bullet there really is aligned to what we're talking about, improving grades five to eight mathematics performance across the state. So not just in Georgetown or in any other town, but just math performance of students in the, what is considered to be middle school grades, grades five through eight. To increase college and career readiness, which we're also doing a ton of work in, improve educator effectiveness, that's where the new teacher evaluation program came from. And to turn around lowest performing school districts, you've seen in the news those changes that have been happening across like the level five school districts. And to make effective use of data to improve instruction. So a lot of what we're gonna talk about tonight really focuses on the second bullet and the last bullet. But I just wanted to kind of overview for you what the state strategic goals are with some of the changes that they've made for us. The new math standards are calling for proficiency and fluency within these domains. I don't expect you to know what they all are right off the top of your head. But for us, the significant shifts that we've noted are in grades six through eight. And you can see that it kind of moves out of number and operations and base ten into ratios and proportions. So it's a different methodology, a different terminology, a different learning. Excuse me for my cold, Paula and I are both sick, actually, so you may have some coughing coming from the both of us, I apologize. And you can also see an increase in standards and expectations for geometry and statistics and probability. And so with the expressions and equations, geometry, statistics, probability, that's a heavy boatload for math at the middle school level, in grades six through eight specifically. And so, that's what our focus has been for the last couple of years. This is the same, this is the same range of what I just showed you, but it's a little bit more user-friendly. And it just shows you the K to eight domains progression. And you can see in the, I don't know what color that is, tanish color, what the expectations are as students move out of elementary math into a more rigorous middle school math expectation. And you can see the geometry is carried there through pre-K through eight and measurement and data carries up through fifth grade, but then it shifts into that statistics and probability. And so that's, that's what our focus has been, is trying to determine how can we make sure that we're teaching all of those skills in the classroom.
Can I just ask?
Sure.
Why operations and algebraic thinking wouldn't be in sixth, grade six through eight?
It changes. It changes in it.
Definition of that changes.
The definition of that changes because it's expected that students will have the foundational skills to be able to move into expressions and equations. So they'll take that algebraic understanding and now they'll work with it in more deep problem-solving skills. So it's really the application of all those skills that are learned at the lower elementary.
So Paula, those things in the tan or orange, whatever color that is, are those all related to algebra? They're not, they're not.
Not all of them. There's, I like, there's quite a bit of geometry in there now, so finding some volumes, finding some surface areas. At, you know, at a very, I mean, at an easier level than we go deeper into high school with that, but there's quite a bit. Plus, there's a lot more probability and statistics in there, even to the point of some standard deviation when you get into seventh and eighth grade. Yeah.
So is what you're asking Cam is, so how does that relate to the focus in? So how does that relate then to the focus of middle school around algebra? I'm sure you're gonna talk about this, Julie, but pre-algebra and algebra.
Well, but, I mean, the series that we're looking at then, where there was two main pathways. So there's regular pathway, which is really more for level two and level, you know, three students. And then there's what's called the accelerated version of a seventh grade Mac course, which is what we're looking for, for the pre-algebra. And then, which we'll have to actually have like a placement test again, because they've got to have a very, very strong foundational skills because they're really being asked to learn some of the eighth grade standards. So then they're ready for taking Algebra One in eighth grade. And so we're still gonna have those two pathways, but we're looking to something, we have this accelerated math. So there's really their teach-out two books, they go by colors, but it's the red books for seventh grade. So this is a level, but they have to know this and this.
Oh, dear.
In terms of, in far as for, you know, for, because they're, we're asking them to drop down some of the eighth grade to set them up better for the Algebra One, which is, you know, in line with Algebra One in high school. I mean, you know, together, those, you know, we've always run those, it's like it's just an advanced group in order to, you know, so then they would be going into honors geometry or geometry, either one. It just depends on their skills. But they will definitely have to have very good foundational skills. So that's, you know, really strong number sense, they know their multiplication tables, they know, you know, how to abstract multiply, divide fractions and decimals with ease because we're gonna be starting to put letters next to those things and wanting them to do algebraic things with them, which, you know, if they don't understand just the basic skills, then they really struggle with that.
In the, where'd it go? In the, I guess, the pre-K to five, what is algebraic thinking, what does that actually mean?
Well, our algebraic thinking in grades K through five is more about understanding how numbers and, how numbers work together and how they can create a pathway for algebra. When we get into, I put standards in the, in your packet, I'm not sure if you got a chance to see them, but the standards kind of delineate what those critical areas are for each grade level. And so our teachers are focusing on the critical areas in each grade level and they, and it's determined at each grade level exactly what the algebraic thinking is for that grade.
It's like in vertical team when they talk about having them understand how many pennies make a nickel.
These are the conversations that we have and it's really because we have to talk about, what does it look like in kindergarten? What does it look like in second grade, what does it look like in fourth grade, what does it look like in fifth grade? And so each grade level has its own specificity in terms of what that looks like.
I guess I wouldn't think about the pennies into a nickel as in algebraic, algebraic thinking, but I can see how it is.
But it's a relation.
Yeah, it's the relationships.
It's a relationship. So you're starting to, you know, introduce that to them and so that they, you know, those that are ahead, you know, in terms of they pick that up pretty, you know, then there's others that will really struggle because they just, they can't see it.
Right.
At the moment.
Right.
You know, eventually, over time, you know, they mature up into it, then they're, but, you know, they're just, it's just building those.
Thinking about what you would know as a young child versus an older elementary child.
It's a number sense, you know, thing, is do you real, you know, know how to eventually add a half and a third together, finding a common denominator. But it stems back to just still in those initial basic relationships.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Believe me, we've had about a year's worth of conversation on that very topic. I'll say that. Just to give you an overview of the things that we've been looking at, we have looked at the Prentice Hall Mathematics Series, which is the, the series that we currently use. But like I said before, it's a series from nineteen ninety-nine, so, I mean, it's the same maker or the same publisher, if you will, but it's a much more updated version. So we wanted to look at that and compare that to what other programs offer. We also have looked at Big Ideas Mathematics, Eureka Math, and the DESE Model Units. We've had our teachers piloting the middle school math programs and doing some comparisons to the standards, but also to other programs. We wanted them to compare program to program, to figure out what the strengths and weaknesses were. And throughout this year-long experience and looking at all of these things, the district has chosen to recommend Big Ideas Mathematics, who is published through Ron Larson and Laurie Boswell, which are two of our heaviest researchers and curriculum developers in math. And it's also math work that's used at the high school level, or these publishers, or these researchers used at the high school.
High schools are real performing on Ron Larson. These are all Ron Larson books.
Which is really great, in the sense that it's the same methodology. And so, setting that up for children has really been our goal for us.
And Laurie Boswell, she does a lot of the, you know, the proofreading and everything. And so she even has in here Laurie's notes, so she looks at it from a teacher's perspective, which they found is pretty beneficial to them.
So this curriculum probably aligns better with moving on to high school than, obviously, the current.
Yes.
Yeah, if he's in well with us, it would, it does. And the, I, it's, it also brings that motif that you'll hear, that terminology used with MCAS. And this aligns from the notes and everything that my staff sent. They said it lines better with Park and MCAS because we got those more in-depth type questions, which is what they're being asked of us. They want us to, you know, maybe find the height of a prism or something and then find the volume. So they've got to know how, you know, to do that first step to then eventually get to the second step. So those are the types of things that we're being asked now.
I mean, the landscape has certainly changed in terms of what students are being asked to do. But at the same time, what we found going through this and the other series is that it's a deeper understanding of math, which is what we're trying to get across to students so that they can learn how to manipulate and use math in a way that they maybe haven't been able to do in a more traditional program. And so the other thing we wanted to focus on was how can we build this into our focus on STEM? How can we help students understand math better so they can look at careers in the future? And how can we do this at a middle school level so that we're building that sense of understanding so that it will carry them up through the high school into some of the trajectories we're hoping that they'll get into as they grow up and move into the college world? So it helps us with college career readiness especially. Here is an example of the critical areas in grade six I told you about in the standards that are in your packet. Each grade level's been identified in terms of here's what your instructional time should focus on if you really want to get to the rigor of what the Massachusetts standards are calling for. And so what we did was we took a look at the four on the left, if you look on the left column, the four critical areas, and then we found where those gaps were within our existing curriculum and then what we would need to focus on within the new curriculum to make sure that we were matching those expectations with the work that we're gonna be asking students to do. And so our teachers and Paula went through and decided, you know, how we could make sure that the pathways would match, but also what the focus area should be when they're in a specific chapter. Because sometimes, you know, when you're in a chapter, there's, as a teacher, there's a ton of work to it. You're trying to figure out the chapter, but we want teachers to know what the, what that critical area is and to make sure that they are focusing in on that with their students. And so I did, we broke through this for grade six and seven, I don't, I won't make you read it, and eight, just so that you could see some of the work that had to be done to kind of level this out in our thinking.
There's a lot there?
There is a lot there. I do have some highlights for you that you can go on, and I'll put this on the website for people that want to take a look at and you can click on the link and it will come up. But it is a research-based program that was really important to me to make sure that we were dealing with current researchers who were focused on the National Council Teachers of Math, who are focused on the mathematical progressions and all the expectations for a lot of the math in the STEM programs that we have, that we are supporting in our schools. I also wanted to make sure that there was technology involved. We do have a wonderful, brand-new school opening up and our sixth grade students will be in there and they will have access to technology. And then we're looking at technology at the middle and high school and we're trying to focus our areas and find work that will be supported within that. And this program has a ton of technology with it. Not to say that students won't get books, because they will, but they will also have the ability to sign on, go online, you can do it as a parent, you can log in, look at the textbook, watch instructional videos, help your kids with whatever programs or problems they may be facing. There's a whole website devoted to parents.
Yes, I printed that out, I was just looking at that, there's a lot here.
There is a lot, I mean, there is a lot out there now, I think, more than ever before. So you really have to sift through a lot to make sure it has.
Because that's the number-one question parents have, I can't help my kids because of math.
Well, I wanted to make sure it had videos for parents, because I know that that's been a great help to parents. Those parents that are on Ten Marks or parents who are looking at Khan's Academy, you know, this is going to be within that, so you'll be able to log in and find that really easily. But on the other side, technology-wise, it also has a progress monitoring system. So our student, we'll be able to identify where our students' strengths and weaknesses are very quickly and support them through RTI and extra help and a lot of the support systems that we, we have to wait until we get the test, you know, grade it and put an headline or whatever, but we'll be able to see it very quickly. And we'll be able to see that standard by standard and be able to help kids where we find that they might need the most support. And so that is huge, I mean, all those things combined is, it's a whole different world out there. It really is, it's much different than I think.
And it was worthwhile waiting for a bit, because I know we went to with the.
We could have tried to look two years ago, but we really wanted to wait.
But then we, you know, when we were involved with other schools, you know, with the seminars that we went to, they were, they're on the shelf now, they had to dishevel because the thing of it is, is that the students weren't ready and they just went out and purchased books, but it's better that, you know, if you introduce it, it's in the pipeline before you go crazy buying books.
We actually had money set aside to buy middle school textbooks.
About two years ago.
But we, as he said, we weren't ready.
We weren't ready, we wanted to really dig deep and find.
There's a, there's a real process to it.
Paula was absolutely right. And we had to be doing everyday math long enough so kids were building a certain foundation and, you know, so it had to line up.
And the vertical teams really had to meet and talk about what, what are we asking kids to do? What do we need to do and how to be built between the elementary and the high school and make sure that.
That's been, you know, a great thing that Julie's instituted and everything, because it just helps me convey to that, you know, to the elementary teachers how important what they do is to us in high school. Because we build upon that. You know, it starts there and then we just keep making it harder and harder.
But, so, everyday math is staying.
Right now, it is, too.
Yes, it's staying, so, and. Yes, it's staying. So, and you feel that it aligns well with this program and it-
I think it'll fit, you know, I mean, I don't see any problem in fitting, in, in fitting in, you know, into this right now. I think this will be a better bridge between it and, you know, our old math program. Because it's, it doesn't align with us. But this I know will feed into us, you know, as we're preparing them for high school through, you know, six, well, six, but six does and then seventh and eighth when they come into our building. It'll be much better then. Because there's definitely some gaps, especially, you know, with the Common Core and the MCAS and potentially Park, you know, depending on which way the state goes.
Right.
This, this will help us close those gaps.
Yeah. I mean, there, there was no techno- technological support for that at all. It was just, you know, an old textbook. The other thing that Julie and Paula and the ta- you know, the, I call them task forces, but the vertical teams had to do with everyday math, because everyday math is a spiraling curriculum. So you see pieces of it all the way through. So it's not set up in such a way that you say, in grade two, here's the grade two standards. In grade three, here they are. It, it all, it all spirals. So they had to identify using the standards and the Common Core. In addition to the spiral, what specifically at each grade level are those, what did you call them, Julie?
Critical areas.
Critical areas. And what, what specifically has to be mastered at each level? So it's, it's sort of a two-pronged approach. But the everyday math curriculum, the top, the, the concept there is it's everyday math. It's, it's you're learning the concepts, but you're also applying the concepts. And you're, it's relational in the sense that you don't do in first grade all subtraction or addition. And then you move on to mu- it's, you're introducing subtraction, addition, subtraction, multiplication, and division in relationship to each other and then it's, then it spirals. So-
And so through that vertical team, we had to take what Carol was saying, is take it apart and put it back together again in a way. And we had to like do surgery on it, you know, and put it back together and make sure we identify in grade two, addition and subtraction is, is there and, and the foundational skills there. And how do we make sure that we know students can add and subtract based on what those expectations are? So-
And I think, you know, with the newer interventions that you're bringing down too, because language-based learners is very hard in everyday math.
Yes.
It's very hard.
Yes. Yes, very language rich.
Definitely.
So it, yeah, so I mean, that's, but if we, you know, get to earlier-
But we've been working, yeah, we've been working through the-
Interventions, you know.
Right. And the interventions, it's, are definitely helping. And so we're finding-
You can start to hear, you hear it in the vertical team. It's starting to, you know, to really benefit now. Because if, if you don't catch them there, they hate it by the time they come to us.
Right. And that's what we're trying to avoid, clearly.
And it, it takes some, but we can win them over.
That's great. That's great. But you have to do the correct, you know, the diagnosis. You have to be able to really identify where the struggle is and-
But it's better, you know, try to catch it as early as possible.
You know, I'm glad you've got that figured out, especially, as you say, with everyday math, that, that language can be really hard for kids.
It's lots of times it's very wordy and, you know, I mean, that's language, that's what they struggle with, you know.
Yes.
Being able to interpret it, you know, even for the simplest of problems. How do you, because that's what is being asked of us. How can you, we give them a plethora of tools, both algebraic and geo-, you know, geometric. Now we got to take those and we want you to apply them. That's always been there in math. We kind of got away from it. But now we're coming back to it. And that's, you know, what we want to do.
You can actually see in your, in your packet that fluency sheet that tells you at each grade level, you know, it kind of takes that critical area, but then puts it into like one or two terms, you know, addition, subtraction, multiplication, division. So it clarifies in each grade level, you know, what those expectations are.
It's not me. I mean, for me, I'm always telling them, there's the beauty of math. That's the beauty of math. You can take all these tools and you can use them any way you want, as long as you use them correctly. But I get real excited. They take them out.
Using correctly, yes.
Oh, it doesn't like her subject.
No, not at all.
So, so the, these textbooks, this curriculum is going to base, is teach the foundations, especially at the sixth grade level. You know, deeper, more-
This is six.
Reliable, dependable way than the old books.
And this is seven.
Sorry, Pam. We started pushing, we started passing books when you were chatting. So- So, and you've got an accelerated book and a regular book?
Right. That's, that's where we would, they, the one you have would be for like level two and level three. Those two combined together would make up, you know, what's the level one or pre-algebra. And that would, would be setting them up for Algebra One in eighth grade.
And are the placement tests created in line with this particular-
They will be. Right. There's really going to be the placement into, you know, for, yeah, especially into the accelerate, you know, for the pre-algebra.
I mean, they would have to be really to have them be accurate.
The bond lines, I mean, you really, really have to have those strong foundational skills. Otherwise, you know, we probably say if they start to struggle, then we might have to back them down. Because we, we want them to, you know, move forward, but not be soul lost, because that's not going to benefit them.
Right.
It won't benefit the students at all. And I mean, we move them up and down in high school all the time. And we found that all of a sudden, I know because I know the awards that are coming as, for their, that we had a student that was really struggling in honors geometry. They came, she actually came to my class, started to, you know, gain her confidence and everything. And now she went into honors algebra two and she's getting an award this year because of her confidence level has come back up. She was just really struggling as a freshman in honors geometry. So we took her and brought her back to Geometry College Prep, prepared her for that. Then we, she was excited and I moved her back to honors algebra two and she's fantastic.
And she's doing very well and doing great and doing awesome.
But that's the type of thing that we do in high school all the time. But sometimes that's what's needed, you know. It's like there, it's not quite a good fit right at the moment for that stage of state of.
It would have been nice to realize in the first place that geometry was the best class for her in her freshman year versus honors geometry.
Well, I mean, she qualified for it, you know, and like that. But then, you know, in high school, I mean, to go from eighth to high school, that's a big jump.
Yes.
And it's a big, you know, especially when it says honors in, in high school, then that means a whole lot of work. And sometimes, you know, the pacing and everything is, you're not, they're not quite ready for it.
Right.
But we do this change very early on. We can see it within the first two, three weeks of school. Because of, I mean, we start right out of the gates, so we'll, we'll know.
I guess my point was you might have more data and more deeper understanding of a student's abilities and, and knowledge base.
But sometimes, you know, I mean, what do we see from eighth, you know, and then, you know, say, no, that shows the signs that they're able, you know, they're qualified, they're capable of doing it. But then they get into high school and then just the whole being as a freshman, upper, you know, the, it's just that whole, I mean, I have freshmen outside my, my room for the whole year and I can see how they develop and, and when, you know, from when they come in to when they're starting, you know, to leave us here at the end of the year.
Right.
It's a huge difference. The girls have bumped up. The guys haven't yet.
Right, right.
Sorry.
Kind of a developmental thing, right? Right.
But I think, I think you have a great point there, Pam.
High school. But I do know a lot of studies say that the freshman year is like the most stressful year.
It is.
Students are really do struggle on many different levels.
Conversations that my ear, my radar is going, you know, all the time when I'm sitting in my room.
Yes. But we will definitely have more information on what our students need support with, with something like this. Because I think it's, it's, it's changed. The technology piece is, is absolutely a huge bonus for us. But built within this program is a whole RTI component that allows us to help kids at all the grade levels. Ident- it helps us to identify where are your strengths, weaknesses, and how can we remediate that? How can we support you so that you're not going in as a freshman and having this quandary of, I don't really know what to do. I don't know if this is the class that's right for me. We'd have better, better data and, and more understanding of what kids need. And hopefully we'll be able to remediate a lot of that at this grade level, at the grade level, in terms of, you know, what students need. So.
But I think this will also, you know, I mean, obviously with the placement into that, you know, like pre-algebra, then we're looking at, you know, okay, you have really solid foundational skills. You've demonstrated that. Then you're, we feel, you know, you're ready for that. There could be other circumstances that come along that may take a, you know, that deters them a little bit or whatever. I mean, there's outside forces there. But on the whole, we're saying you have the ability or, you know, what we see on paper to do it.
You want students to live up to their potential.
Exactly.
So would, would you say that it's true that the middle school curriculum, even if people are not in that accelerated curriculum, is still more rigorous than the curriculum that students have been receiving? Answers, yes. So would you also say if students don't take pre-algebra and algebra, to, to be on the algebra in eighth grade track, that the middle school curriculum will prepare
All students.
All students for algebra and geometry in ninth and tenth grade?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I would.
And that is a huge focus for us to make sure that that's the case. Absolutely.
Because that's not necessarily the case now. We had, we, I remember there were kids in algebra. At one point we had that issue of, you know, there were kids in algebra in eighth grade and they almost had to repeat it in ninth grade because it, they didn't have the, the ability to handle it.
With this, you know, with, for the levels, they would be, you know, so they've taken Algebra One, you know, geometry.
Yeah.
And they have the ability to, you know, there's just a lot more flexibility in, in high school. And even some, and I've, we've had several cases of this where students have doubled up sophomore year.
Yeah, that's what you were asking last meeting, right, Pam? Right. I mean, I am, I, I am concerned that if a student ends up in algebra in ninth grade, how are they going to make it to honors or AP Calculus in twelfth grade?
They can. By, by, the best year to double is, is your sophomore year, because you can do geometry and algebra two. And that, that will then, if you're, you know, south, then you would do pre-cal your junior year and then you'd be eligible for calculus in your senior year.
Okay. When you think about the calculus kids, are, is it almost always the case that they would qualify to do algebra in the eighth grade? That their level of math proficiency is such that-
They are, but since I teach honors calculus, I can tell you that they've got, there's some weaknesses.
Yep.
There's definitely some, some that come in with some major weaknesses.
Okay.
And they, and they really struggle, especially when we get into some, because I don't hold back. It's calculus.
Teach the course.
It's calculus. So you're in the big leagues. You got to play with the big leagues. So I expect them to be able to do their, these derivations and integrations that, you know, I give them exposure to. Because that's what I'm doing with honors versus AP. They're getting actual college credits. If they get, you know, from what, three, no, four, about something like that.
Yeah, it's three and above. It depends on the college.
Three, four, and five. But anyway, they, but I have seen, you know, because I've had some of those students not as, as freshmen and, you know, in geometry. So I'm, you know, what I, I'd really like to see is, you know, build a stronger, you know, math so that they're coming in with those, you know, solid foundational skills, which comes from elementary. And then we build upon that in a, in middle school. Now we're setting them up for, you know, things better, I think, in terms of high school. And hopefully, you know, getting them.
And hopefully moving into college.
So if the curriculum in the middle school is more rig- you know, is more rigorous, then it, it may be possible that students, they may, you have more students that are invested in, able to take those higher level maths.
Absolutely.
Because we want that deeper-
That's what we want. We want more students in higher level math.
Because I think the conversation with the last committee meeting, some of the questions, I think, and, and I'm sure their parents have this question too, is, is that I think everybody wants to be assured that the way we're moving isn't less rigorous. It's more rigorous.
It's more rigorous.
It's, it, okay.
Definitely more rigorous.
That wasn't that the question that was on the table last time? So I just wanted to be sure.
It definitely has, you know, we have, because just with MCAS and Park.
Right.
It's asking us to, to try and have them go to those deeper levels of understanding of what this geometric property or algebraic property will do for you. It's been more on the surface, you know, like they can relatively give it back to you in the moment. But do they really understand what this really does for you? That's really where all of this is heading, even with, you know, with Park and MCAS. That's really what is going back to the twenty years ago probably, where that's what we're, we're asked to apply what we've learned.
It's application and understanding.
And we've been, it's been more on the surface type.
It's, you know, I just, I'm glad to hear all that and, but, but it takes, it's difficult to find room in your schedule to double up. I mean, that's not always something that every child is going to want to do.
No.
So I'm just hoping that because of the, the excellent deep foundational nature, the, the good quality of the sixth grade, you know, sixth grade, seventh grade program, that you're going to have students really capable of algebra in the eighth grade. And maybe that that group of students will grow as time goes by.
That's the goal.
Yes.
That is the goal.
You know, I mean, hopefully it's, that's it. It's positive and it'll grow. Not get smaller, but grow.
Yes.
Yes, I agree with that. You know, one of the things that I, I've been wanting to say that I never got the chance to say is that, and I said this to Peter and Paula when I first started working here. I was so amazed that Georgetown had four years of math, because that is a graduation requirement. And many high schools are, are talking about it and thinking about it, but we've been doing it for so many years. And it's so impressive. It's called the Mass Transfer Block. And there's this whole state-level expectation that we'll get more kids invested in math, more kids in four-year math programs. And we already have it. And so the fact that we're in that conversation already is amazing. And then when you add STEM into it, the things that we're going to be asking kids to think about and do at the middle school and in the high school, and then as we progress forward with math and get more students involved and excited about math and participating in higher-level classes, I think you're going to see some really impressive results. They really do. It's going to take some time to get this in, embedded in the curriculum and obviously, you know, students up to speed with what those expectations are. But I think in a few years, you'll definitely see some major growth there. And we already have huge growth. So to see even more is, more, the more the better.
And that math, four-year math requirement helps with, if students don't pass MCAS. We, we don't have many kids that don't pass MCAS in the tenth grade, but those, sometimes we have people move in. Sometimes students, because they have to pass it by the time they get ready to graduate. That four-year requirement really helps with those kids that, you know, make it to two-twenty, but don't make it to two-forty, which is a requirement. So, you know, in, in other words, those kids just don't sort of max out after three years. They, they can take that fourth year. That level of rigor often pushes them to the point where they're much closer to the two-forty, where they can earn the graduation diploma.
Because, yeah, I mean, and ours, they have to pass for, you know, four years of math. And if by chance they don't want to get out of that two-twenty, two-thirty-eight range that needs improvement, then they, they have to pass their math class.
Right.
In order to graduate.
Right.
So, you know, we just, we're used to it.
I noticed there is an app that goes with this, My Dear Aunt Sally.
Yes, I downloaded that and actually, but we've been playing it. Just to, just to make sure it works and to make sure that it does what we want it to do. But there, there, we could certainly share with parents in, in the community, all of the technology pieces. I wanted to show you some and you can see it up there. If you go online, this is what you see when you go online for the sixth grade example of a student textbook. So you can go right into the textbook. You can see all the lessons that are here. You can see all the video tutorials on the left, a glossary of math vocabulary that are within the lessons, all the essential questions. I don't have my glasses on, so I can't read the last. But you can see, I think it says review there. If I'm, I can look on my computer. And it will also tell you some of the selected questions. It will show the work for you for teachers and students, and parents, I should say, and students, so that they're able to kind of see that happening in real time. You know, some of the work that's being done up, because it's hard to remember all these things in the classroom and then go home and try to do the work. It really is. I mean, we all remember those days. So we wanted to find something that would help everyone understand what those different concepts were that are being taught and be able to go back and see it and, you know, in a real fashion that's helpful. So we're excited about that. And so what we're, what we're hoping for is to adopt the program, authorize it and put it in an order for, before, you know, we move, oh, well, we're going to shut all our schools down. So we know that's going to be a little bit of an issue, figure out where all the books would go and things like that. But over the summer, we want to be able to upload our students into the program so that when they come to school, they will have access to the online capacity as well. And then we'll train our teachers. We're hoping to train them on September. We've already had a half-day training on all the programs we've, we've been piloting, just to get a better sense of what they offer. But we'll have additional training, hopefully, September twenty-fifth. It's our first half-day for next year, professional development. And then again in January, after we've kind of made it through the half-year mark, bring someone back if we need that additional training in grade six through eight. Right. Does anyone have any questions? You may not have them tonight, but if you do have them, I mean, we can certainly speak to you.
I did take a look at the website the past couple of days and it definitely is friendly to parents. How you, you, you go on to the main website and it says, you know, if you're a teacher, if you're a parent. And I did enjoy the- you know, the flashcards, all the parental things that parents really need at home when the kids aren't in front of their teacher to kind of help them along.
Right.
Um, so I thought that was very interactive and it seemed, and then I did compare the websites of the other, um,
Programs.
Programs that you were looking at. The only question that I have for you is, what, what were the, what was the major point that the vertical team felt this big ideas was, you know, what won you over versus these other ones that have very good reputations as well?
I think the biggest thing here is the, the rigor and which of the questions and how they're phrased and how they're asked. That across the board from all of the teachers, there was four of them that, you know, been evaluating it. That was their biggest thing because of, you know, Park and MCAS is always in the back of our minds. That that was probably the biggest self actor and that Pearson, um, Prentice Hall, I mean, was not fully up with Common Core. Whereas we feel Big Ideas is.
It clearly is, it's all over the websites.
I know, you're not gonna find anything that doesn't have that stamp all over. It's kind of like your eyes have to glaze over.
They're not gonna buy it.
When you see it and then you have to look at it. And that's, it's taken us a long time to really break into it and find out, is this real? And does this really have what we want it to have?
Because, I mean, they'll say off the top that it doesn't have like as many, um, the ro- question, but those we can generate very easily. If we're just asking for practice, we can gen- cause we have other software tools that we've had onboard that we can bring that out, you know, for a quick, uh, I want you to do these ten, um, division problems with, uh, fractions, you know, or something. Those we can generate pretty fast. And, you know, just for extra practice. But when it comes to actually taking those, those, uh, properties, you know, as I, I like to call them and then applying them and, and, and these layered questions, that's where we feel that, that Big Ideas was better over Pre- uh, Prentice Hall.
When Margaret, Julie and Paula and I met to talk about sixth grade, that was one of the questions that I asked. Sort of, you know, usually when you do this, you start with, well, what is it we're looking for in any new program? What is it we know we, we want? And this issue of critical thinking and, um, practical application was one of the, Julie called up on her computer what those four or five things were and they used those as a way to evaluate the program. So they looked, you know, what, you know, critical thinking. You know, what does each program offer, you know, with the strengths and weaknesses.
And I think also too, I just said, is that we spent last year, the year before, realigning.
Yeah.
So when we realigned, so we really knew.
You knew where your gaps were.
Then we were really looking and says, okay, this is how much we have to supplement now because of, you know, the nineteen ninety-nine versions of, of the textbook. They're just not up to where we are now and with twenty, you know, when, when it came out with twenty-eleven. So that really helped us, you know, look at, had a different focus in terms of when we're looking at these.
What, what we were missing.
Right.
So it helped us to identify, you know, can that be done well within these programs?
And it made, it makes sense to do it based on the standards because if you do it based on the assessment, Park, MCAS, that's a losing proposition because whether the state goes.
Don't know where the state's going.
Whether the state goes with Park or whether the state goes, one thing I can tell you very clearly, I believe that it's not gonna be the existing MCAS. It's not a question of Park versus the existing, they, they've, they've moved on. I think there's no one that doesn't agree that the current MCAS in its current form needs to change. So it might be a next generation MCAS that comes down, but it's going to be lined up to these standards. So that's why it's more important to pick a program that's the closest you can align it to the standards, which hopefully aren't gonna be in flux. I mean, Julie can tell you, since the first set of standards came out in the nineties, there's been at least four
Yeah.
iterations of the math standard, some of which have been pretty, pretty significant.
Yes, I would say this shift has probably been the most.
The most significant. So I don't think that's going to go back.
No, I don't think we're gonna go back and ask kids to do less and, and understand, you know, fewer things. I definitely don't think that's happening. Um, but I think for, for our purposes, we wanted to do something that we felt was rigorous but could stand the test of some time.
Right.
You know, and not just be this fad. And we didn't wanna jump into anything too quickly. We've been looking, you know, for over a couple of years now. And like you said, we had to know where our gaps were first, where are our major holes. But I also wanted to make sure, because I've been working with Margaret and Donna with RTI. Um, I wanted to make sure that it had the same capacity because I know what's happening in the elementary schools in terms of supporting students where they need the support. But I wanted to make sure we could bring that to the middle school well and not have to recreate the wheel in that. And so this has that, um, whole program built within it to, to help support our struggling students. And so that, to me, is important. And the technology piece to help parents, um, and kids, I mean, you know what it's like when you leave your book at school? It, it's tough.
Or you have to carry those textbooks in your backpack.
Or you have to carry it, you know, it's always nice to be able to, um, have some access, um, to the, to the work that you need to do.
And also a curriculum that uses games and uses, you know, technology in a fun way. Because as you increase rigor, you have to, you know, present it in such a way that it's engaging, engaging and fun, yeah. We're gonna be talking, I think we're gonna be talking next meeting on the eleventh about the one-to-one initiative for technology that we wanted, you know, introduce at the middle high school. So the, the, it's all about timing, right? So you're, you're introducing a program and then shortly after that, perhaps we're gonna have good technology in people's hands so that it is an enhancement. So it's part of the curriculum as opposed to, oh, it'd be nice if you have a computer at home to be able to do it.
Well, we had to make sure that we could access that technology when the day comes.
That's right, exactly.
Couldn't get anything that didn't have the capacity for that, knowing that.
So all the puzzle pieces fit together. It's just, you know, it just no when.
Right.
There's a lot of factors as to how those decisions get made. But we think this is the right time for the middle school program and we're hoping to have your support. So because the, your policy says that it's a two-part process. So I don't know if you want Paula to, if she doesn't mind leaving the textbooks in my office. If anybody wants to take them and borrow them and look at them more closely, you're certainly welcome to. And then they, then, uh, I don't know, the Paula needs to come back unless she's, wants to, but, but, uh, but, you know, Julie can obviously be here. And then if there are additional questions that you have, either we can make sure Paula could get them ahead of time and respond to them. Or if it's necessary for her to come back, I'm sure she would. Um, and then, you know, hopefully, you know, you'd be able to make a decision at the eleventh meeting. And then Julie can do the purchase orders and soon as July one happens, they get the stuff out and, you know, get them in the hands of teachers as soon as we can.
Will that give you all enough time?
Well, that's how it has to work unless we have money this year to purchase the textbooks, which I don't believe we do. So, um.
Yeah, I'd love it if you could keep the books.
Yeah, be happy to.
And then can take some home.
See an online version?
Yes.
So we can look at the.
So I can give you, um, a login if you wanna go in and take a look online. I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll email that to you.
So you email and we'll get it out to you.
I'd rather look at the book.
Yeah, well, we'll keep the book too. We have all kinds of learners in the group. To the needs of all the learners.
If we know this is, cause we have the teachers editions of it and I know that the staff would be working on their, uh, initial fall, you know.
Yeah, we could do the books. We don't need the teachers.
These are all student editions.
No, students are fine.
These are all student editions. But, I mean, if we knew that we were gonna go forward with it, then they would be doing which, that's a lot of us do our put, uh, initial, you know, for modifying something or whatever, or starting up something new, we create our programs over the summer. Do most of that at home anyways.
So because the yearbooks, uh, the textbooks are from ninety-nine, do you find that you have to go outside of the textbooks to? Okay, so when my kids come home with like worksheets, that would be what the teacher's doing? The teacher is going beyond that textbook and?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the supplementing that we've had to do.
They've had to supplement for the past couple of years now. Yeah.
So with this, the?
We won't have the need.
No, now you should have, you know, now it's on, online, online access plus, you know, what you have, you know, the textbooks. So there shouldn't be as much, you know, of that, um, in terms, you know, I mean, worksheets will still be there cause that's a good way for them to get their practice and everything. But, um, you know, that's online.
But you only, I can, you know, you probably select the disjointed pieces because it's not all the same publisher. It's not all the same.
Big ideas worksheets.
Right.
Right.
Yes, yes.
Right.
That'd be a huge improvement.
Yeah, no, because now they're, they're, they come from several different, you know, it's wherever they can find the best resource. And then they create, you know, copy those worksheets and, and go, so, I mean, we're doing that and this is when we realigned now in, in high school. I mean, it might, we might be on unit eight of our, our realigned, um, program. But I'm using things from, uh, the Geometry CP book that was in chapter six or chapter five. But I know what it's, you know, you're trying to do and they just have to ignore the, you know, it's just what we're doing.
On the top, right, right.
Could be eleven dash fours, whatever, but this is the material you're, you're, we're working on, you know, volume for a right circular cylinder and a right square pyramid.
We remember all those things, right? Get intimidated just listening to it. You gotta have Paula for a teacher. She'll make you understand. That probably would've helped. Okay, but that, that'll be interesting to look at, but I appreciate you coming.
You just leave them with Laura, we'll, we'll, uh, take care of that.
Thank you, Paula. Thank you. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
We do have some surplus though. Do we wanna do that now? Oh, the surplus, uh.
Your math surplus things.
Yeah, does Paula need to be here for that? Unless she wants to explain the, the textbooks that are being surplus.
Oh, no surplus, that's really easy. We just wanna clean house. I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I looked at all the dates and everything. It was a waste.
Need to be. I'm gonna come in with some technology, cause I have, uh, those, those slide projector things. Actually, I had to move, I took them home to my bed, cause I have no room in my room.
Yeah.
But they are now all packed up in a box. When if I, as soon as I get that into you, then I will get rid of those too.
So one of the things that I talked to Joan and Mike about today, cause we're gonna, we're on the eleventh, we're gonna come in with a pretty lengthy list of surplus materials from Penbrook. Um, but we were talking about the, the textbooks.
Right.
Right, and, and books that, you know, there are textbook companies that sometimes want to purchase books back. Or there are, uh, third world countries that want to buy textbooks. So we're actually looking into that. I mean, we hate to see them get thrown into the dumpster.
But we're gonna make third world countries buy them from us?
No, 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 we declare them surplus. We say we have no value for them anymore. There's not a, a resale value, but we would gladly make them available.
Right, we donate them.
In fact, we were talking about that today and Mike said that, um, like some of the countries, like Haiti, we were talking about cause we wanna give the desks, some of the desks and the chairs. And I said, well, what about some of the computers? And Mike said, they don't have electricity. So, you know, I mean, they're very interested in infrastructure kind of things, but, you know, so we forget that in our country, things are quite different. So I think, you know, if we can give people, you know, books that are in good shape, I'd rather do that. Throw them in a dumpster.
Great.
Unimportant question, but on the, on the surplus list, all the single copy books, are those, were those samples or what was? I get the ones that there are sixty-six and whatever, but there are a lot of one copies of.
Could've been teachers' books.
They could've been samples, Michael. They could, or they.
Like a teacher edition.
I don't know if you know this, um, but Michael's noticing that on a, on a few of these, these lists, there's like one book or two books. So could that be that those were samples the teacher had collected or just?
Just stuff that.
Right.
You're really getting rid of the nineteen seventy-four geometry book?
Yeah.
Donate that to you.
Remember, math doesn't change.
No, I, no, I, I realize, but working makes sense of nineteen seventy-three. I think we should decide if we really wanna get rid of that.
So that, that.
Okay, do we wanna do that now? We'll just.
We should, we can, sure.
Vote for that. Alright, so, um, she will entertain a motion to declare the list of obsolete math textbooks as surplus to be disposed of by proper protocol.
So moved.
As presented by Paula Adar.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Julie, I wanna thank you for the materials you put in the, in the packet. I think those were helpful, you know. It wasn't too much, but it was enough so people could. No, no, I, I think, I think you did a nice job on that. It was very clear. Very clear and interesting, yeah. I think it answered a lot of the questions people were asking, so much appreciated. So did you wanna talk just briefly?
Let's talk briefly about Alice.
Sure. So, um, the, the chief is looking forward to coming on the eleventh and I, and he may bring some of his people. He, he's fortunate to have people in his department that have gone through Alice training. Um, and in particular Derek Jones, who maybe you remember, he was the school resource officer several years ago. And Derek is actually a nationally certified Alice trainer. So he, he's very, very, um, passionate about it and, and very up to date on it. And one of the things that I, I would like to have, if, if Derek ends up coming, I would like him to talk about is some of the statistical things he shared with the administrative team. So I, I had the chief come in with his group and then all of the administrators, including the assistant principals, came to a meeting. And, um, the discussion we had was, you know, is it time for us to look at Alice? Especially given the fact that it, it, you know, the governors, I, I did, we did include a little information. There's a much more extensive document that you could access if you're interested in, in reading all of the governor's recommendations. But Alice, for the first time, was recommended as a suggested protocol that districts should look at. Not as a separate entity, but as a way to enhance what you already have in place. We have a, a lockdown procedure and an evacuation procedure that we've been practicing regularly, loyally for a number of years. And it, it, it came out originally from our district safety committee, which we really enjoy. It's been a great partnership and we worked on an actual crisis manual that had a detailed lockdown procedure. But, you know, we've always, you know, sort of, and Derek really sort of helped us think about this. And there's a lot of research now, unfortunately, as I was saying to Barbie the other day, unfortunately, there's research that has come out of awful incidences, that incidents where there's been tragedies and li- life, life lost. Um, and as a result of those experiences, there's lessons learned. And, um, it has raised some questions. Like if you have an intruder at the door with a gun, is it really the best procedure to have the kids sitting still in the corner? Is that what people would instinctively do? Probably not. Most people aren't gonna sit there. But peop- right now, people don't know that they can do something other than sit there. Um, and, and so I, I told you, Alice stands for, it's, it's an acronym. Um, and it, it represents the different, uh, phases that you, that you think about. Um, where did I put it here?
It's on this paperwork too.
It is.
Alert lockdown.
Lockdown, inform.
Counter.
Counter and evacuate. So like as Derek was saying, there are certain circumstances or scenarios where it is the right thing to do to stay in place. Given where the incident is in the school. Currently, right now, we say code blue. And everybody knows that's a lockdown. They know, believe me, they have it down to a science. And we've even done it during times when you would, you would expect there to be issues, like at lunchtime, where all these students are in the lunchroom and it's like they need to know what it is that they need to do. And, and they do, they've done it well. Um, but lockdown is not the preferred thing to say, or even code blue. They're not, they're not advocating codes. You say, there's a shooter in the cafeteria. So that says to somebody that's on the other side of the building, hmm, maybe it makes sense for me to get out of here instead of stay here. Right. So those are the kinds of things that they discuss with teachers and they discuss with children. What, it, the, the whole goal is to give more options. And it is only if you're, you are in imminent harm of something awful happening to you. Um, so Hope Doran, who's our assistant principal, she, she's actually worked in another district where they did this. And her feedback was very, very positive in terms of the feeling of the faculty, the feeling of the students. I think the feeling of the parents, once they understood it a little bit better. Some of you that were here, couple of years, four, a few years ago, I don't know how many years it's been, maybe four years, five years ago. We had a little false start, I think, in the district around this issue, uh, before Alice became a household name in school safety. Uh, we had a little incident where some information went out and somehow made it into the paper. And we were on the national news. I was talking to fat Fox News. I had people in Colorado calling me and asking me, so tell me how you're doing that. It just really spiraled out of control because some info, you know, not enough information came out. Um, and emotions got in the way. Um, so we have been working and looking at Alice now for a number of years, trying to figure out, okay, does this make sense to enhance our protocol in the event you have an active shooter? And, you know, when it came out from the governor and, and the more the chief, now we have, you know, Chief Cudmore is in there and you know, the more we've talked about it and then Derek's influence, we brought all the administrators in because we wouldn't wanna go with this process if we weren't a hundred percent on board with it. And we really understood, like, what could it do for us? And how might we implement this? And what would be required to do it well? So I wanted to bring it to your attention and I'd love to. So I wanted to bring it to your attention, and I'd love to have the chief come on the eleventh, so you can, you know, hear from his perspective. And if he brings a couple of officers that have experience, that would help as well. But uh, you know, the the administration and I feel like, you know, we wanna work with the police on this. This can't be the police initiative, though. Don't, you know, the chief is very clear about that. This is not, oh, the police are coming in and they're insisting the schools do this. It has to be, we believe it's a good thing to do. We're all in support. Administration, school committee wanna move forward with this, and the police are our are our assistants in it. Right? So they have people who could help train. They would, you know, stand up with us and talk about, you know, the things that they can talk about better than we do. And um, so we would like to uh adopt a phase, you know, a couple of year approach to this. The first phase would be um having the first day of school, part of the first day of school, uh, would be, you know, the chief would be there, and we would talk about, you know, as we talk about our goals for the year. Introduce this so that it could be done in such a way that we could get the teacher's support for it, you know? And then at some point, Julie's gonna come in one of the July, one of the June meetings and talk about the PT calendar, so we'll show you where we're recommending it be placed in the calendar. And then the suggestion would be to have a parent meeting at some point during the year, so, you know, like we've done before, we bring the parents in, they can.
Good idea.
Ask any questions, anything that, you know, they wanna know. And then figure out how would we then train the students? Would we do it through health classes? What, you know, what what process would we use? And it isn't, I think one of the things that people were very fearful about when we had that little misstart, uh, was, oh, my god, you're gonna have like little five-year-olds. You know, you're training them to fight a gunman. And and that, that isn't the case. In fact, they don't recommend this this training any any lower than fifth grade. Because the assumption is that anybody younger than that is gonna listen to their teacher, and they're, you know, they're gonna, the teachers are gonna, um, you know, handle it a certain way. But, you know, in fifth, and the other thing that I think wasn't clear to parents, and I understood how the concern would be, is it's developmental. So Derek talks about, you know, you're not talking about the same thing with fifth graders, and and how how you like them to to react, or a- as you are to, you know, juniors in high school. So it'd be very developmental as well. And of course, you know, if we implement this, we'd be happy to make sure, you know, you see the protocol, you see the curriculum, you know, that, there would be nothing we'll hide, you know, we're gonna hold back. But, you know, we did feel that this was something that we felt was, it, the time was was right for this, um, because we are always trying to improve our safety protocol. And unfortunately, you know, these kind of things, while we've never dealt with them in Georgetown, you know, I guess no one's safe, completely safe, right? So we, the more prepared, the more empowered, the more options that are available to people in that event that something horrible like that happens, we see that as an asset.
Right. We talked about that the other day, that Carol and I had how different it is for teachers, not not just students, but teachers.
Right.
That they have to think of of what they would do in that situation.
Yeah.
And statistics show that, I mean, this is happening.
Yeah, and teachers have saved lives. You know, the, you know, teachers have saved lives, and um, you know, I think the one question that the teachers generally have, and actually Hope said that this was confirmed where she had seen it ruled out before. And Derek actually confirmed it as well, because he's gone in and trained other other school districts, is the liability, right? So if I make a decision to leave my room with my kids, and God forbid, you know, somebody comes around the corner with a gun, you know, um, you know, how how's that gonna, what am I gonna do about that, you know, what what's, and and they said, anytime you are trying to do something that is in the best interest of your students, you know, liability is 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 not the issue. Obviously, there's other issues with it, but, you know, so I think that many teachers just need to be reassured. If I if I make that choice, then I wanna know that.
I'm not gonna.
I'm not gonna, yeah, yeah.
So how many districts do we know, like in in?
Like Derek had that information, right?
He did. He he forwarded us, there were forty, fifty in the area that that used the Alice.
Really?
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, I think when the governor comes out with a task force of high-powered public safety people, and and they recommend a series of things, and one thing they recommend is Alice. You know, then um, you know, people start to 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 take that more seriously.
Yeah, I'm I'm interested to have them come and and talk about it. Yeah. I I'm I'm thinking that that was even more like six or seven years ago.
I lose track, Barbie.
On the PTA then, 'cause I remember I actually got called from Fox News, too, saying. So I think it was a long time ago.
It might be.
So isn't it interesting now that?
But that's how things happen, right? That you see that happen. You know, sometimes you're ahead of your time, and sometimes, you know, ideas just don't work out, but then three years later, they do, so that's just kinda.
Sandy Hook, I mean, we've had some some pretty significant loss.
And that's what was, I thought that was very powerful, didn't you, Margaret? When Derek was talking about like the lessons learned and the statistics, and what they know about, you know, like just even having the students, you know, move. Like the whole counter thing, you know, move. They're not saying attack the gunman necessarily, but just moving. He said, just, it's it's harder to hit a moving target. As opposed to, you know, you're you're just, you just sit there. And most people would not just sit there. But there's a fear of, you know, if I if I don't sit there, am I gonna get in trouble? And, you know, there's all those things. And so this, the whole, part of the main goal of this is really to give opportunities, options, explore, you know, and it's more empowering.
And the other thing, Carol, you talked about, even in the younger grades, something honestly I had never thought of, that you piled things in front of the door.
Yes, yeah, he did talk about that.
You know, just something very, very simple that, wow, geez, yeah, great idea, never thought of that, that you block the door, but just the harder you make it for somebody.
Right, that's right. He did say, you barricade, you know, as opposed to if you don't, if you can't get out, you know, but rather than just sort of sitting there, where somebody might take a gun and break the window, and then in they come, you know, just. Yeah, that's right. It is, that's exactly what he said. You make it more difficult, you know, you you create obstacles. So there there's a lot to it, but I I think we all, you know, 'cause I point-blank said to people, we're, we need to be unanimous on this if we're, you know, 'cause, you know, in the past, there ha- there's been a lot of discussion, and it hasn't been unanimous. People have had a lot of fear and trepidation about it. And it it rests with accountability and liability, and it's, you know, you you just don't wanna believe you could ever possibly have to be in that situation. But I think now that there are some, you know, increased realities, you know, and and we were able to be reassured that this is not something radical. This is not, uh, you know, we're not having little kids fighting gunmen. That that's not the the plan. But there there are things that this can bring to enhance what we're already doing. So um, everybody around the table, everybody around the table said, yes, 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 we should, you know, we should do this. So the the plan was to bring this to you, um, give you some information on it, you know, have, you know, Donnie and his his crew come. Um, and then um, over the summer, plan how we would introduce it to the teachers, you know. Donnie felt very strongly that it should be introduced to the to the district as a whole. As opposed to, well, Margaret's got a professional development day on the twenty-fifth, we can talk to her people, and then we'll talk to, you know, he just felt very strongly that if we're gonna say that this is something we're doing and really send a strong message, that this is a good thing, you know, this is a good thing, and this is something that will benefit everyone, that we do it at a day when we have everybody. So we wanna do it in such a way that it's not a downer, like, okay, welcome back, but now we're doing it, it, but that it just kind of folds into, you know, here are some things we're gonna be working on this year, and, you know. We we wanna, we wanna, you know, help you, do something good for you.
So June eleventh.
June eleventh, so the the chief will be here. And he apologizes, but he, his schedule was, his schedule changed.
Okay, we um, does anyone have any questions about the superintendent's information that she provided us in the packet? Subcommittee reports. Uh, budget of finance, we're trying to get a meeting together. Uh, governance.
Trying to get a meeting together as well.
Negotiating.
Oh, that's a quiet.
So is negotiations, Lorraine and Pam? With an alternate of Suzanne?
I believe that is true.
Yep.
I think so.
According to.
Yeah, I believe that's true. I think we had discussed having Barbie try to finish up with the teachers. Because otherwise it would be too complete.
Yeah, both Lana and Pam.
Right. Uh, 'cause Lana, uh, so, you know, we're continuing that conversation, and there's a meeting on June eighth scheduled for mediation, so um, we're optimistic.
Is that the three o'clock meeting, or did that already occur?
The the meeting, yes, the three o'clock.
The June eighth at three o'clock, but we're trying for Monday.
Yeah, we're trying to figure out a way to do.
Trying to get a meeting Monday together.
Yeah. Okay, so that's.
Um, public relations, you guys met the other, yesterday, right?
Yes.
Yes, we had a very productive meeting.
Got through a lot of things, yes. We, uh, so we discussed the communications plan, and Carol's going to give that a a final edit, and then give that back to us, and then after that, we would present it to the school committee. We discussed the district satisfaction survey, which, we rolled it out on May twenty-sixth, and.
It's posted.
Less than twenty-four, yes, it's posted out, and we would appreciate anyone who hasn't taken it yet to please, please do take it, one survey per household. And less than twenty-four hours later, we had a hundred and sixty-nine responses.
Up to two fifty, something.
That's great. That's terrific. That's great.
And, yeah, did you wanna say anything about the results, or?
I mean, I I think, you know, I I think we we looked very briefly at at them. I think they were generally positive. And just kinda, you know, next step is to once, in a week and a half, once the window's over, to actually kind of look at the numbers and see what they mean and see what they say, and lots. What I really like is the vast majority of the responses are coming back with comments. Uh, they're the open-ended ones, so it's, you know, you can get so much out of a one, or a two, or a three, or a four, being able to see what the comments are and and relate them back, I think is really helpful.
Right.
As well.
Right.
So how are we going to roll that out as far as results? How are we gonna?
We're.
Are we gonna present it here at the school committee meeting?
Yes.
We talked about that briefly at the meeting yesterday, um, and the idea was, you know, the last thing that we wanna do is is sort of wait for it to come out, and based on the meeting's schedule, kind of talk about it at the July meeting when everyone's sort of.
In summer mode.
In summer mode, um, because I think it's, you know, a lot of people are responding, there's a lot of good information. We don't, we're certainly not trying to hide any of it.
No.
So the thought would be to sort of release it, you know, make it public, put it on the website, um, shortly after it's done. But then to give the school committee a chance to to kind of digest it, figure out what it says, um, whether it be at the retreat, or or at one of our next meetings, and then to kind of be able to draw the conclusions.
Okay.
Our conclusions out.
So then we'll.
Yeah, of course, yes.
And we'll be talking about it at a school committee meeting.
Yes.
Yeah.
And then as soon as.
Like in the fall?
That happens, then we would post the results on the website. And we we weren't really sure exactly when it would go up on the website. If it goes up in the summer, when a lot of people aren't around, we would certainly, you know, tell people about it again in the fall.
Yeah, refresh the, yeah.
Yeah, re- refresh it. But in any case, the results will be available to the public.
And we wanna use it in the next strategic plan.
And we're gonna be.
That's the point, the purpose of our timing.
The survey, yes, is um, because we're gonna be starting to create and build our new strategic plan. It'll be the twenty fifteen, twenty to twenty eighteen strategic plan, or is it called twenty sixteen to twenty nineteen?
We can do whatever we want, but if it's a three-year plan.
It's a three-year plan.
Then it would be, it would be for fif- yeah, 'cause we would need, we're gonna, it's gonna be, it's supposed to be over basically this year. So.
It overlaps years the way we do it, so it could be fifteen to eighteen or sixteen to nineteen.
Right, we can figure that out.
Right, and so these results will be a definitely a big, a big help with that. Let's see, so then we also discussed the new district website, or, which is basically, the development is on track for happening in the summer. Um, but you've made a a fine, a fine start and beginning, and um, you know, thank you so much for for doing that in collaboration with with Wes and Vaughn, and it will. So the whole new website is gonna be based on WordPress, and there're gonna be a lot of great benefits to it. It's gonna be much more user-friendly. Um, just initially, I'll say that the the first pass, the first kind of draft that you put out there, um, a lot of new new information, um, is is easily available. You know, things that are happening, like all, um, I don't know. Thing, anything from the Georgetown record, or from Facebook, or from the schools posting new events, you know, as things take place in real time. That's what I'm trying to say. It's kind of, this website is gonna be a little bit more real-time than what we have. What we have now has a static feel to it. And it's it's hard to make changes. When you wanna put up new information, it's difficult. You have to find somebody who knows how to do it, and it's, this is going to make that whole process of posting what's happening right now a lot easier. Yeah, is that right?
Yeah.
Makes sense? It's gonna be more intuitively simple to use. It will, and we, you know, we had spoken about the speak-up feature, where uh, people, members of the public, anybody can just can share their questions, concerns, thoughts with us. That will be on the new website. So. And that's.
Most busy, pretty much, yeah.
Thank you.
Where we're at.
And safety, is safety all done for the year?
No, uh. No, we have another one.
Oh, wait.
It it, is it June eleventh?
On the back.
Yes, what, oh.
June eleventh.
June eleventh, yeah.
June eleventh at nine?
At Pearl.
Yes, 'cause we were gonna, we were gonna really look at the parking pattern, yeah, yeah.
School building committee. We have not met, um, but I will say that uh, I spoke with Mike Anderson, and he is taking on the the cause of trying to get signs to warn hunters away from the back of the new Pembroke school, because the, you know, the state forest is extremely close. And during hunties, hunter, hunting season, that can be of of can, great concern. It certainly is to me, um, and will be to many others. So we wanna put signs in the woods that will warn hunters that they're coming upon a school before they see it. Um, and so he's going to be get, doing a mock um, sign and bringing that to a school committee meeting in the near future. And then after graduation, he and I are gonna walk through the woods to see and, you know, where it would make sense, in most sense, to post them.
Is it just wanting them that they're approaching a school, or is it no hunting?
Demanding that they stop.
Like, it feels like it should be no hunting.
Yeah, that's not something that I think we have the ability to do. It's it's a state, it's a state forest, and the hunters have their, you know, their rights to hunt.
The chief has, the chief has pointed out that he's had trouble, oh, because this is not just around Pembroke, there there are other places in town where.
Right.
Yeah.
You know, it it is complicated, as Pam said, but um.
I mean, you know, we're all very concerned.
I would think, though, you have to be so many feet, though, right? I would think you could post so many feet.
I think, I think that uh, the chief would be able to tell us what the bylaws are on all of that, because as I said, he's spoken about it several times, and he's.
And and Mike has spoken with the chief, so he has ideas from him about, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where it where, yes, yeah.
Will we summon?
It it's been a, yeah.
Something about it.
Yes, yes, it's been a concern of the school building committee, and we've all all agreed that signs should go up there.
Yeah.
To warn hunters.
Okay. Okay, new business, we did the textbooks. Uh, we had a very generous donation um, for the softball program. Uh, Mr. Greg Corsia um, has donated five hundred dollars for the softball program, which was very.
Very generous.
Nice of him uh, to do that. Do we know what it was to, is it?
I think it's just for the program, um, but the girls, I I heard today that the girls are, they made the state, they made the tournament.
Oh, good for them.
So they had to win like two games out of six, or something like that, and they they were able to make the tournament play, so it's very exciting for them.
I know they were like in Nantucket this past weekend.
They were, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, they were.
Which to me is crazy that we play Nantucket, but it was a, like a, they left, I don't know, eleven o'clock. I I know they got home very late.
Yes.
Um, and luckily, the weather was nice, too, but I just thought that was strange that we played.
I know.
Good for them, good for the girls.
Very exciting.
Um, so the chief will entertain a motion to accept the five hundred dollar donation from Mr. Corsia with gratitude, as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's very nice of him, thank you. Our summer meeting schedule for the school committee?
Right, so you usually meet once in July, right, 'cause you close out the year. It's usually a short meeting. There's not really a lot of things on the agenda, but we clean up all the things that we that we need to to do that really can't wait until August. I also give you staffing updates, so you you know, like what's the status of our staffing, what positions are open, you know, so I I know we we usually do a staffing update um, in July. And then um, we have our August meeting, which is generally our tours, and then our our business meeting, which is usually the. Which is usually the week we come back, so you can look at the dates and then, um. I guess it mushes into the second, to the next, uh, D. And that is, you know, uh, do, do we want to do something at, as, by way of like a summer retreat, like we have done before where. We identify a day and, you know, we create an agenda, we did have Mike come one, Mike Gilbert. From MASC come one year when we had some questions about, uh, some things. Um, but we also could fill a day easily talking about the, the, the satisfaction survey and the. What we want the goals to be for the next strategic plan, I mean, you know, eh, we, we did it at, in, in such a way we could coordinate a little bit with the administrators probably and. Maybe do something jointly to talk about that, but it's, it's really up to the committee whether or not you want to, to do a. You know, commit, usually it's a, a day, what do we do before, like nine to three or two or something like that. Um, but, uh, just, you know, it, it, you know, the summer starts and everybody gets busy, so. If we were thinking about doing that, we'd want to maybe put out a doodle or something and figure out, uh, you know, what days work for people and so people can get it on their calendar.
Right, yeah, I think it is a good idea, if, if people are able to attend, obviously it's not gonna be something that.
No, it's not mandatory.
Mandatory, but, um, I, I got a lot out of it, I thought, um, Mike did a great job facilitating it, uh, and then you also got to. Uh, see the committee members that you're with all the time in a different, you know, he has a couple of different. Um, things that we, that we talked about, that was, that was interesting, so I, I think we should definitely, if Laura could send out. That new doodle thing that she has.
Yeah, she's become a doodle, doodle expert, right Laura?
That would be good. Doodle bug. And then, so, uh, what do we want to do about the summer, do we want to do the same thing?
Do, we usually meet like.
Put out a doodle for that?
Usually it's like.
The third week of July?
Sort of the end of July, maybe the third week in July, I'm just, when would, when would we have the information on the end of the year closeout, John, I guess that's the question, right?
Um. Well, we'll probably have it by the, I would say, the seventeenth. So, but I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be away the twenty-third, so, eh, if you could have it, the, if you want me to be here, I'd rather have it on the thirtieth. I'm afraid to say the sixteenth.
Yeah, cause it seems early, right?
Yeah.
You don't want to meet if you can't, you, you want.
Unless you don't have it on a Thursday, I, I, I'm going away on Thursday, the twenty-third, so. And I'll be back on, uh, Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah.
I don't care, or the thirtieth, if you don't, if.
Yeah, I, I mean, it really is kind of a couple of item, eh, it's a short, it's a short meeting. So do you want to do the thirtieth, is the thirtieth work for you guys?
Would, would they say again?
It's a Thursday, it's a Thursday.
Oh, it's a Thursday, so, okay.
Great, thank you, I forgot I was going away, yeah. Yeah, I, I may have trouble with the thirtieth, but that's okay, as long as you're here, yeah, I, I, so I don't know, but, but, but let's, let's vote for thirtieth.
Okay.
And then we can do, we can send a doodle out about, you know, sometime maybe earlier July, you know, we, we can figure that out.
Okay.
Okay, and then the August meeting, do you want to talk about that, uh, that's, if it's the last.
So the first day of school's.
September first.
Right, so would it be that?
It'd be the week bef- it'd be the week before.
Twenty-seven?
August twenty-seventh. It's usually how we do it.
Okay.
Okay, so let's just do August twenty-seventh.
How does that fall in relation to Labor Day?
Uh, it's the week before.
Oh, yeah.
It's, is it two weeks before?
It's gotten before Labor Day this year.
Week and a half before.
Okay. For the twenty-seventh.
And yeah, we usually do six o'clock for the tours and seven o'clock for the, for the meeting. And we just have to remind Suzanne about going to, turning the course.
Yeah, she is, yeah, she is aware of it, we talked about it the other day.
Great.
I think she's just trying to find a location that's suitable.
Yeah, she just wants to drive to the Cape if she can avoid it.
Yeah, I don't know what happened to, they, they were offering a minute, uh, Northern Essex, I think, was the location.
There was one date this year, it's, I think there, I. When I was looking for mine, I feel like they're doing one sort of regionally, once a year, so if, and I want to say it was in like March.
Yeah.
So it's like, it's already halfway through a year at that point.
And it really is a good thing to do early on, I think, it's hard if you, if you have to wait a year or your year.
I did it my second year with Alana and, um, I said to myself, oh my goodness, this would have been so beneficial.
Yeah.
Had I have taken it earlier, so I know when, but it fell like on a crazy day, that it just didn't work, but.
They, I did the, the retreat, not the retreat, the, uh.
The conference.
The, the conference in November, it was on the Cape, but it counted towards it, so, that's another option for.
Yeah. For her to do that, right, I don't know if she, yeah, cause she's the Cape, yeah, it is a commitment.
That's a commitment, obviously.
Um, the other thing too, just a reminder, to do the, uh, the ethics, um, online, um. Takes about a half hour, so thank you Laura for reminding us about that.
Huh?
Baker Adams is Monday.
Yep, Baker Adams is Monday at seven.
Do you, when do you want the, the sheets back, is that Monday or do you need that before?
I would say by four o'clock on Monday.
Okay. Yeah, put it together.
Okay, so I'll, I'll let Suzanne know about that too, just to, to get it in. Um, so I think that's the full agenda.
It is.
It's shocking.
Yeah, but don't, don't get spoiled by this, I, I'm gonna warn you on the, I'm gonna warn you on the two June meetings, we, you know, desperately tried to distribute it, but. I don't think it's gonna happen easily.
Okay.
It's all good stuff, but it's.
I'll take it, because Pam and I had, uh, children just returning from Kiev today, so they're looking forward to.
So this is nice.
They're going to Six Flags.
Seeing us early and you're going to Six Flags early tomorrow.
Tomorrow at six fifteen, yeah.
Okay, take care of my child, please. So, um, there is no, uh, need for an executive session this evening, um, so at eight forty-four PM, um, we will be adjourned in the school committee meeting. Call?
Nope, you just have to have a motion.
Okay. Motion?
So moved.
Right, any discussion about ending the meeting? Great, thank you, have a good night.
No.
I was trying to refresh my memory with like the honey, the bell.
I, I did, yeah.
Okay.
I'm, I just don't know what, the problem that I'm having.